My colleague, finding a way to meet in the middle with a parent who seems hard to please, figuring out how to help a student understand a new concept or learn to love something he refused to even attempt yesterday, and persevering through it all to be each day feeling proud, accomplished, and hopeful is what truly drives me as a teacher. Thank you, Katie. That was beautifully said. Congratulations.
Marnie has been teaching for 27 years. She started her career in Indianapolis where she taught kindergarten, first grade, and third grade. Before finding her home in G S D at Glenwood, she also taught fourth grade in Colorado, first grade in DeKalb County, and grades five, two to one of Holy Innocence. She has a tremendous amount of experience teaching at the elementary level, and she says teaching is her heart. When something is in someone's heart, it shines for all to see, and Marnie's colleagues see her light shining bright. Here are a few things they shared about her. Marnie defines meaningful and motivating. She works extremely hard as a teacher to make sure that her students feel loved and supported. She motivates them to continue to learn and grow. She's been a joy working at Glenwood with Marnie. She has shown humility and resilience, being an incredible model for other staff and students. She encourages staff members to be their best and to keep going. She has an incredible gift that can make students and teachers believe they can handle anything. She goes above and beyond in all areas of her job. Her students are her number one priority, and she is constantly looking for ways to differentiate her instruction to meet the needs of all of them. Marnie cares about her students more than anyone I know. Marnie says, "Ten minutes down, my favorite thing about teaching is helping each student find their superpower and learn how to believe in themselves. Helping my crew to understand the power of yet and give themselves the grace and the space to persevere through difficult tasks is so rewarding. We all have things we can't do yet, and we are all aren't good at everything. I love helping them more than ever in kindergarten to realize it's okay not to know, but it's not okay not to try. I always say, 'If you knew everything, I wouldn't have a job,' and mistakes are proof you're trying." I want to share one more quote a colleague shared about Marnie. I strongly believe that anyone who works with Marnie, or has a student in her class, or has a conversation with her, should share these thoughts. Marnie is the definition of a committed C O C teacher. Her first mission is to always meet the needs of her students. She inspires students on a daily basis to be their best and is always looking for ways to take her practices to the next level. Students and parents are lucky to have Marnie Kaplan as their teacher. Congratulations, Marnie.
Ms. Kemp has been a teacher at Oakhurst for 12 years, 10 years at second grade, and two years as a kindergarten teacher. Ms. Kemp is one of those special types of people that exudes quiet confidence. Her colleagues say, "Yolanda is a master of her craft. She isn't louder showing," and she's not the chairperson of multiple committees, so I think her talents and achievements often get overlooked. When you walk into her classroom, it's like you walk into a dream of what teaching and learning are supposed to look, sound, and feel like. Students are engaged, the grownups in her room are kindly and respectfully engaging with students, and the overall tone is warm, positive, and inspiring. Students in Yolanda's classroom know that she has high expectations of them, that she is there every single good or challenging step of the way to help them achieve. Her professionalism and authenticity inspire colleagues to be their own best selves. Yolanda says, "I love to see the curiosity in my students' questions. Their excitement for learning is the best part of my job. I love to teach math. There are so many ways to arrive at the correct answer. I enjoy having math talks with my students. When I was in grade school, I never thought of myself as a good math student. The ways we unpack strategies now would have done a lot for my confidence." The way Ms. Kemp teaches gives her students confidence in their abilities. Her colleagues share multiple wonderful statements about how she teaches and the tremendous relationships and connections she builds with her students. I can speak from personal experience as a parent of one of her former students, a student that I know could be challenging at times. That every word that was shared about Ms. Kemp is 100% accurate. She's a master at her I will leave you with this last statement from a colleague, as I feel it sums up what it's like to be a student in her class. Yolanda is a master level relationship builder and makes it her first priority to know her students. The students know from day one without a doubt that Ms. Kemp is there for them. She's on their side, she has their back, she wants what's best for them. In doing so, the students feel safe, comfortable, and empowered to learn, and to help their classmates do the same. The culture of her class is one of true family. The students are kind, compassionate, and supportive. The Marnie environment is magical, and the students thrive in her classroom. Congratulations, Ms. Kemp.
I have Yolanda Nesbit, gifted and intervention teacher at West Chester Elementary. Yolanda started teaching at Oakhurst in 2004, where she taught kindergarten and then third grade. When West Chester reopened, she made the move across town to teach gifted and creative thinking classes. Teaching at C O C was not her first teaching experience. She landed her first teaching job when she was six years old. She hired herself to teach handwriting to a few neighborhood kids on her back porch. Unfortunately, her class would demand their snacks up front and left the play without completing an hour of work. I know that all the countless students over the years are thankful that Ms. Nesbit did not give up on her quest to be a teacher after her first endeavor failed. Yolanda is an amazing colleague and teacher. Her humor, leadership, and the way she challenges her students to be their best thinking self is inspiring. Her colleagues say, "Yolanda is an amazing teacher. I'm not sure how she makes it happen, but she clearly motivates and inspires everyone around her to be their best. The students want to believe her. She is present and real. She just looks at you and you feel your ideas have value. The students know she is there for them, and she wants them to succeed." Yolanda has taken on being the school leader for Equity. This is an area where her colleagues truly appreciate her leadership. They shared, "I am so grateful for Yolanda's leadership. Over the years, she has taken the lead on most of our Equity work. She pushes us to be better. She doesn't judge or make us feel small. She teaches us how to relate to each other and opens our eyes to perspectives in a graceful and kind way. I can hear her saying, 'When we know better, we do better.'" Yolanda says, "Advancing racial equity isn't a district initiative. It's imperative and demands that educators take the initiative on the school level. I have devoted myself to programming initiatives and conversations where practices based on unconscious biases are not left to flourish. It's a slow journey, and I still have much to learn, but I do it in service of all students, and I endeavor to bring everyone along for the ride." Yeah, being Ms. Nesbit is the job of a lifetime. I teach to impact, to show children the countless ways in which their ideas, abilities, experiences, and interests are exceptional. Like most teachers, I give a lot to my students, but I am willing to be pulled, stretched, exhausted, and even reinvented if it means making a difference in a child's life. I prioritize the children above all else. I teach for the future of humanity in mind." Thanks to Ms. Nesbit, and congratulations.
Monica joined C O C in 2011. Although she had many amazing teachers influencing her throughout her life, it wasn't clear to Monica that she wanted to take the education path until after she graduated from college. She decided to work as a substitute teacher, figure out what age group she liked working with best. She discovered that the elementary level was where she would era and then became a first grade teacher in 2004. Monica says her favorite thing about teaching is the lightbulb moment. I love it when students realize their potential and they finally get it, it being whatever they've been working hard to achieve. When the lightbulb goes off, their little faces light up with enthusiasm because they achieved their goal. In first grade, lightbulb moments come in many shapes and sizes. I've had students jump for joy when they tied their own shoes without any help, wrote their first and last name, or read a tricky word. I celebrate all of their successes, no matter how big or small. Monica is a leader at Winona Park and in the district. Her work with students and colleagues is inspiring to everyone that she works with. Her colleagues say Monica is top notch in everything she does in order to motivate and inspire her students to be their best. Her work ethic continues to inspire me. She works so hard to meet kiddos with what they need, making it fun and engaging along the way. She not only inspires her students, but she also inspires those that are lucky enough to cross her path. She is a gift. Ms. Blackburn shared in her application about her first grade teacher, Ms. Phillips, and how she inspired her and made learning exciting. Ms. Phillips challenged students and allowed Monica to go to the library whenever she wanted to book. She also gave out smelly stickers to celebrate her students. But Monica, I can confidently say, after reading your words and the words of your colleagues and visiting Winona Park over the years, you are the inspiration for your students, and Ms. Phillips should be proud that you followed in her footsteps, smelly stickers and all. Her Winona Park friends shared, "When I think back on the past 10 years of watching her teach and be a leader, Monica has stepped up every day and continues to do so. I am humbled to be in her life, at your colleagues in front. She is pure goodness." Congratulations, Monica.
Next, we recognize fifth grade teacher at Fifth Avenue Elementary. Ms. Law has been teaching for 18 years, 10 years at F A V E in fourth and fifth grade, and eight years in DeKalb County teaching third grade. Sheree says, "I'm proud to be a lifelong learner and set an example for my students to inquire deeply into interest. I have a passion for social justice and equity, which I carry with me everywhere I go and which drives how I interact with this world. I recognize the impact that we have as teachers on futures and communities. I do understand how important our role is in society. Building relationships of trust and understanding with students is a special part of what I get to do every day. Helping students grow in confidence and find their voice through these relationships and content is one of my favorite parts of teaching." She's a leader at F A V E. Her colleagues say, "Sheree always makes herself available for supporting other teachers and staff. She leads our grade level meetings and encourages positive relationships with parents and the community. She is also part of our Equity team at F A V E and encourages other teachers to add accounts from history to educate our students. She's willing to go above and beyond what is in the curriculum to motivate her colleagues and her students to inquire deeper into the surface of education for personal and professional growth and knowledge." Ms. Law has won the inaugural acceptance of the Good Equity Troublemaker Award last year. This award recognized the C O C staff members who have been speaking up, speaking out, or contributing to justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Sheree says, "I have a strong belief that true history should be represented in our curriculum and that our students have the courage to learn it. Although our fifth grade civil rights standards and history are vague, to name a few people that the majority of our fifth graders were already familiar with, my colleagues and I decided we were going to expose our students to diversity represented in the civil rights movement and help them understand the movement with one of many different kinds of leaders and voices. With my students, my goal was to bring a more equitable and true picture of the civil rights movement to our fifth graders. My attention and support Sheree gives to everyone around her is appreciated by all." Another teacher in her building said, "She personally motivates me to be a better teacher and dig deeper in subjects and careers when we teach. I am a better social studies teacher because of the bars that Ms. Law raised in her effort to teach America's history." She's always a team leader, and when asked to work on a project that would support and empower teachers, she is invested and does a fabulous job. Congratulations.
Jillian has been teaching in C O C for nine years. She started her career 13 years ago in Clark County and has taught both second and fifth grades and has served as an academic. Jillian is a leader at Tally Street. She's a member of the I L T, helps plan and start the house system, and is the emphasis behind Tally's fifth grade trip to Tybee Island. Her colleagues say, "I think there are many qualities a leader must possess, but the most important one that comes to mind is integrity. To me, integrity implies not only honesty and good moral character, but also steadfastness and foresoundness, meaning someone that is calm under pressure as well as fair. Jillian is a person of integrity. She knows the difference between equal and fair. She meets students where they are. To me, this is leadership." When reflecting on teaching, Jillian says, "I would say that my favorite thing is the relationships with my students. I always want my students to come to school and to feel like my classroom is a place where they can have fun, feel accepted, and be willing to take risks. I believe that establishing my classroom as a safe place allows all of my students to learn to the best of their abilities. When my students are willing to take risks, their lightbulbs are free to turn on when they have learned something new or achieved something that they want to follow through hard." Jillian is a teacher that loves children's literature. She says, "I deliberately connect my students to the community through children's literature. I think that books are mirrors, doors, and windows for all of our students to be able to see themselves or those that may not look like them. I think using a variety of text in our classrooms allows students to see what the world truly looks like outside of Decatur and what helped in preparing them for the world." Jillian is truly making a difference in her school community, and her colleagues appreciate her and sing her praises. They say, "She connects with kids, builds relationships and trust with them, pushes them to think critically and passionately, and without a doubt imparts some valuable life lessons to them. I would love on my daughters to have Jillian as their teacher. I would feel comfortable and excited in knowing that they have someone who cares about them, not just as a student, but as a person. She is a total package." Congratulations, Jillian.
Next up, we have Beverly Byer, sixth grade science teacher at Beacon Hill Middle School. Beverly has spent her entire career teaching at City School of Decatur. She started 17 years ago at Oakhurst Elementary, where she taught first and third grade. She made the leap to sixth grade seven years ago and knew she was in the right place the moment the first group of sixth graders walked into her classroom. Beverly says, "Teaching the content I love with insightful teachers who challenge me and push me to grow every day shows me the move to Beacon Hill was definitely the right choice for me as I shifted into the next stage of my career." Beverly's colleagues have a lot of great things to say about their friend and coworker. They shared, "Beverly makes personal connections with her students from the moment they walk in the door. She's the blue team and gray lead and has stepped in when sixth grade needed it most by filling in the gaps and going above and beyond. She regularly gives her time, her talent, and her resources, and is always the first to help others." Beverly says, "I love discovering fun ways to teach scientific concepts. Unfortunately, many students come to class with preconceived ideas about how boring schools or certain topics are, so I have to find a way to unlock their curiosity. I love how science isn't just learning for the sake of knowledge. Science develops our ability to ask questions, gather information, and organize and test important ideas. It takes a problem-solving approach and promotes a positive outlook that can build confidence and support communication and social skills. It helps us make sense of the world around us, which is something many of us need, especially after the past few years on planet Earth. When my classroom is full of actively engaged students questioning, collaborating, and having fun while learning, I know I have designed a successful science learning experience." Beverly's colleagues are inspired by her teaching and how she connects with students. They shared, "Her teaching is the embodiment of the C O C mission. She works tirelessly to see all students of all levels and abilities have equitable opportunities to learn and feel valued." And, before I close, I just want to add that Ms. Byer is the first teacher to have the title of Beacon Hill Middle School Teacher of the Year.
Now, we recognize Mara Burke, ESOL and Latin teacher at Decatur High School. Mara has been teaching for 23 years and before coming to D H S 13 years ago. She taught at Lovejoy High School, Georgia Virtual School, and Tirtman State University, where she taught future English teachers for two years as a Peace Corps volunteer. Mara says, "Her favorite thing about teaching is building relationships with my students and being someone they can come to for a snack, or a safety pin, or a quiet place to study. Recently, between classes, a student came into my room with a handful of coins that she needed to help counting. These students come to me when our bell schedule has been adjusted and they're not sure what class to go to next. Every day, I am overwhelmed with gratitude when my students trust me with their needs and allow me to support them as they navigate high school." Not only does Mara know a thing or two about navigating D H S, since she's been there for 13 years, she knows firsthand what students are going through, since her son Joe is currently a senior at D H S. This knowledge and caring and feeling loved and valued is exactly what her students need. If some of her students are frequently dismissed or procedures challenging, her class is different. She understands the context, the behavior, and often the vulnerability of her students. Her colleagues shared, "Deep in the heart of the oldest building and the oldest part of the school, around the corner, there is a superhero. Not one with a cape or x-ray vision, but certainly one dressed in heels with perfect hair." Mara Burke has quietly and mightily gone about her job for many years of teaching Latin and ESOL to a small percentage of our student body. On most days, Mara's classroom is filled with a mixture of several different languages, laughter, and sometimes music, and the desks are strewn with scissors, glue, markers, and laptops. Students are gathered in groups, are perched on her couch, and in the middle of it all is Mara mostly running around and differentiating her five to 15 kids at a time. Each morning, she stands in the hall to greet her students with a smile and a sincere welcome. Mara is so much more than a teacher. She is their counselor, their parent, their support system, and oftentimes, the only connection these students have in the system. She advocates quietly and consistently, usually doing most of the phone calls, lesson planning, and resource gatherings by herself. I think sometimes Mara is the only teacher that really knows and truly sees these English language learners. She knows more about their stories than most people. They have been vulnerable with her, and she knows their strengths and weaknesses. Mara is the backbone of support for them. Thank you, Mara, for all you do to help your students feel safe, seen, valued, loved, and successful. Congratulations.
Now, let's give all of our teachers another round of applause.
Our students care deeply about their students and they live up to our vision of building the foundation for all children to be their best so they can achieve their dreams and make the world a better place. Now, Dr. Furman, board members, and audience members. Before I announce the 2022-23 District Teacher of the Year, I'd like to say thank you to all of our teachers. First, to D E F for sponsoring the awards tonight and for always supporting our teachers. Now, I would like to ask D E F Board Chair Maria Pinkleton to support the award.
Evening, you all. This has been amazing to see all of the work and the love that the teachers in this room give to our students. My son is currently at Beacon Hill and has inspired teachers. He's a science teacher, and so you all are amazing. You love our kids. Oh, my God. But D E F has been in Decatur for now 20 years, so it's 20 years anniversary, and we are so excited to be able to support just a little bit of what these people do day in and day out in bringing their best selves, their humorous selves, and their love of teaching and education to our students. So, D E F is giving all of the teachers a token of our appreciation in the form of the financial support, some check, of $200, and then $500 for the teacher that wins the overall district. Thank you all very much for all that you do and for letting the E F be a part of this. And now, the
Here's
I would also like to thank the District Teacher of the Year from the selection committee. They had a hard job, and they took it very seriously. Now, as you've heard from their own words and the words of their nominations and colleagues, our Teachers of the Year are an outstanding and dedicated group of educators. But now, it's time to announce the District Teacher of the Year. As a C O C Teacher of the Year, our representative will go on to compete in the state Teacher of the Year selection process, and the teacher selected will also receive $1,000 towards the professional learning of their choice. Now, before we turn our attention to the screen, to see who the teacher is, I want to read something from the district winner's application that I hope they don't mind me sharing. There are so many people to credit for my odyssey in education. I'm dedicating this recognition to one in particular, my son, Amir. Amir is my teacher, schooling me every day for 25 years. He was there the morning I was announced as West Chester's Teacher of the Year, and he has, as he entered the room, he had the biggest smile. I cannot thank him enough for enduring my late nights of work, the later nights when I attended O L A work, the constant school talk, and for sharing his mom all these years. Thank you for sharing your mom with us in the background.
Board members, we would like to take a group picture with you and tonight's While they take a picture, we decided to leave your flowers and the box to make it easier for you to take home. They're in the very nice spaces there.
you. I wish
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of our teachers of the year and to Ms. Nesbit. At this time, we will move on to public comments. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the community signed up for public comments?
We do. We have two.
All right. As a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience.
The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to individual members. Speakers should be courteous and professional. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, would you please call our first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is on Zoom, and it is Mr. Akar.
Okay. Dirk Clark, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, just a second. So I read the report before today's meeting in terms of the enrollment increase, and I understand that based on the report, the enrollment increased by about 86 students over all the whole city schools of Decatur. And 86 students over 5,000 students, I believe the city of Decatur schools have about 5,000 enrollment overall, may seem like it's a small increment. However, trends are what matters, right? So if the trend is on the increasing side, then 86 students over five years makes about 430 students. So based on what I can find on grade schools, Oakhurst Elementary has about 500 students. So basically, every five years, we'll be adding 430 students if the current trends continue. My question is, do we have the infrastructure to support that? Are we thinking about adding new elementary schools, adding new facilities for the high school, or new facilities for the middle school? Because again, I understand that these 86 students will be spread amongst the whole grade levels and among multiple schools. But at the end of the day, we're adding a student population equal to one of our elementary school sizes every five years to the district. So yeah, my question is, do we have the infrastructure to support that, and what are the plans for supporting this enrollment increase? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is in person, and that is Elise... I'm sorry, Elizabeth Burbridge.
So you may remember me from two months ago. Annaback. Okay. So hello, my name is Elizabeth Burbridge, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a former history teacher. I'm now a teacher educator. I'm a parent of three girls in the city schools of Decatur, resident for 11 years. And one of the reasons I'm really interested in what I'm about to speak tonight is that while I was a history teacher at a high school that is not in CSD, there I was a VP US History teacher, and there was a significant racial disparity in who made it to my class. And so I really wanted to follow up on that within CSD. So I would like to share information. I've learned about the Decatur IB Diploma Program by RACE. But before I do, I want to also focus on that we're just, we're not tracking this as of right now and other important data. And without asking hard questions about where we are, we're not going to be able to judge if we have success implementing the initiatives that I know would take off. So earlier this year, I emailed Dr. Banks asking information about our IB VP classes by RACE. She had PC'd Kristen Gibbons, who then asked further clarifying questions. And I eventually was received and was able to put together the number of such students of students by RACE enrolled in our IB Diploma Program. And I actually have shared this with all of you, but I wanted to kind of speak it into record. So for those who are unaware, the IB Diploma Program is an academically rigorous track within our Decatur High. Students are required to take six IB courses, three at the standard level, three at the honors level. All Decatur High students do take at least one IB class, IB Biology, but the IB Diploma Program begins during the student's junior year, and students must apply for and be accepted into this track. Students can also take IB courses without completing the diploma. So I focused on the IB Diploma Program mainly because Principal Lobster, back in September, had presented on milestones, but I was looking at these higher academic courses. So currently, we have 505 white juniors and seniors at Decatur High. Forty-nine percent of our white juniors and seniors are enrolled in the Diploma Program. Our next largest racial group are black students. We have 214 black junior and seniors at Decatur High School. Eleven percent of them are enrolled. And then approximately a third of our Asian, Hispanic, and mixed students who are in their juniors and senior years are enrolled in our IB Diploma Program. Overall, 37% of Decatur High's juniors and seniors are enrolled in the IB Diploma Program, which means that white students are well overrepresented and black students are well underrepresented. And so that's why I really think we need to be focusing, or including, not even focusing, but just including the data that asks, why are only 11% of our black students enrolled in this program compared to the 49% of white students?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again to all of our members of the CSD community for sharing your comments with us this evening. At this time, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman to share the superintendent's comments for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. So this evening, I just have a couple topics to share with the board and the general public. First, I'm going to go through our strategic plan and... Am I going to present, or you want me to? You're going to click through it for me? Oh, there we go. Hold on. I was waiting. Getting it to the right screen. There we go. Okay, so just a few things this evening. I'm going to give an update on where we are with strategic plan, talk about the town halls for a little bit, and then tell the board and share what is the next steps with our action plan. I'm going to go over report cards, what those will look like for K-8 students. Those are going to be issued later this week. Also, just a very quick update about our first dyslexia task force meeting, and then we have a couple of highlights to celebrate for our department. Just a reminder, this is the timeline that we... Regarding our strategic plan, we started way back in actually January, even before this timeline began, with the self-assessment that the board completed and identified that strategic plan was one of the top priorities to put on our work plan for the upcoming year. So all the way through the process, we've done, you know, been keeping up with the work and communicating the plans and what has been happening along each step. And so we are moving and grooving on this strategic planning timeline and making really good progress. This is an overview of the process, kind of where we started and where we're going. So we first started with the SWOT analysis, and that's a strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities analysis. And the board will remember that they completed the SWOT analysis, talking about what are the strengths in the district, what are the weaknesses or areas that we should focus on as a district, what are opportunities, things that we should be taking advantage of, or resources that we have not yet tapped into. What are threats? What are things that are obstacles that we need to make sure we can navigate around as we move forward in our strategic planning process? We did this SWOT analysis, as I mentioned, with the board. We also did this with a large group of community members. And then we also issued a survey, and it had a really good response, and GSBA even said that over about 650 people responded, and they said they've never seen that number of responses, even in really large districts. So I want to give a kudos to our community for being really involved and sharing their thoughts on where we need to go as a school system. So then, all of that information was taken and provided to our planning team, and the planning team met a couple weeks ago. They reviewed all the information from the SWOT analysis. They had a large amount of data at their fingertips to look at and review as they decided what are these big goal areas that we want to focus on as a school district. And if you're ever wanting to follow, we have been capturing all of this information on our strategic planning website, which is on the CSD website, including links to all the data. So every little piece of data that has been available through this planning process is available for the general public as well. So this planning team identified five big areas for us to focus on as a district, and then they also identified what we're calling strategic accelerators, major things that will help us move towards those goals quickly and efficiently. And then they will pass the baton at our meeting, which is this Thursday, which is our planning, our action team meeting, and the action team is made up of city schools of Decatur employees. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we're strategizing the formation of that team to make sure that we are getting the right people at the table in that, in that meeting as well. So then they will develop, what does success look like? We want to know about one of the goal areas in student success areas. What does success in that area look like? How will we know when we've got student success in all areas? And what are measures that will help us gauge, are we making the right progress along the way? And then what are some action steps we can take for innovative practices that we can embed as we work towards that, towards that goal? Again, another thing that came up out of the planning meeting was that we need to refresh our vision and mission statement. So we're going to take some time, look back through our vision and mission statement. I'll be leading a task force, and a large portion of that will be students that will be engaged in our vision and mission, community members as well, and staff. We want to refresh that vision and mission to capture what we are about as a school system in this moment and what we want to become in the future. And then all of that stuff kind of comes together, and we'll be communicating out at board meetings and through town halls, through district communications, so that we are all involved and everyone's aware of what next steps and what the progress that we're making is, and we will share that overall again at the board meetings in February and March for final approval by the board. And I want to call attention to the text at the very bottom, that this is a community-inspired plan. This is a plan very much that has come from what our community has said are our strengths, our, where we want to focus our work, what are opportunities we need to take advantage of, and what are those threats we need to be conscientious of. And this is a strategic plan that is inspired by our community, but is for their future. And when I say their future, I mean our students' future. This is focused on students and what our students need to be successful as they move into their future. The big goal areas that this group identified, that the community planning team identified, were student success in all areas, organizational effectiveness and excellence, cultivating and retaining quality professionals, and building a sustaining and engaging and inclusive environment. Just a quick digger, a little dig deeper into these areas. As I mentioned, each of these areas have what we're calling strategic accelerators, and these are levers that we're going to tool to get to the success in these big goal areas. So the first group of student success in all areas is they identified providing and delivering engaging curriculum, increasing mastery of the curriculum, and then provide relevant and meaningful assessments. And you'll see lots of different little visuals here to represent, this isn't just about math, science, social studies, and the core content areas. This is about student success in every area that we have our students working on in the school day, whether it is PE, whether it is theater, whether it is writing. We want our students to show that success in every single area that they are engaging with in our schools. Our second area is equity and student support, and we want to increase wellness resources, embed career and college preparedness in diverse ways, and expand and diversify access and engagement for extracurricular activities. Equity has been a part of our work for the last five or six years. We want that to continue, and focusing on keeping our students well mentally, physically well, so that they can perform well in school and that they can be successful as a student student. We're looking at embedding college and career preparedness, so thinking about how are we getting our students ready for those jobs that haven't been created yet, for that college degree that no one has thought to think of yet? So what are we doing to get our students prepared for that as they move forward in their academic career? And then making sure that we've also diversified access to all the various things that we have in our school district, including the IB Diploma Program. So we want to make sure that every student has the opportunity, has the support and access to reach those very important activities that we have available in our schools. Organizational effectiveness and excellence, of course, I was not surprised to see financial stewardship here to make sure that that is one of our core tenets, that we are responsible with the large amount of funds that we are entrusted to by our taxpayers and our public and, our public funds. Monitor and implementing an environmentally sustainable, long-range facility plan. This is a very, I think, this is a large desire from our community that came up, and why it's very important to engage the community in the strategic... Because this is an idea that I don't think any of us really would have highlighted as strongly as it came up in our community, is the desire for what our community wants to... For not just impact our students' learning, but how we operate as a system impacting the greater community in Decatur, in the state, and on the globe. And then another last one here is safe and inclusive environment. The fourth area, cultivating and retaining quality professionals, they identified four strategic accelerators. One is using consistent equitable hiring practices, attract and tap diverse human capital, address relevant and appropriate professional currencies, prioritize and invest in anti-racist and relevant professional learning. I have kind of focused in on that one about attracting and tapping diverse human capital, especially as I've heard about our Teachers of the Year, who started as paraprofessionals. It is not just the traditional college student that moves through their college wanting to be a teacher. We've got to make sure that we are looking at those members of our staff that are here every day, already loving city schools of Decatur, and how can we use them and that capital that they bring to us? So that's the one that really attracted me when I saw that, I was like, that is... And then hearing our Teachers of the Year talk about their experiences, that really stuck out to me. And then our last goal priority here is building a sustaining and engaging and inclusive culture, where the strategic accelerators are fostering rich connections between all stakeholders, empowering the student voice, utilize community resources and partnerships, and facilitating communications between all stakeholders. The one that really speaks to me here, and when our action team comes together, I'm sure they will have ideas for all the other ones, but that it's empowering that student voice. When I think about adults making decisions for students, I'm always like, well, what do the students think? Like, what would be the best classroom environment for them? What would they like to see as part of their curriculum, as part of their choice? What should their school day look like? So I'm really excited on some of our ideas on how we're going to lift the student voice through the rest of this process as well. So our strategic planning team is coming of, our action team on November 10th. So what are we doing to get our students prepared for that as they move forward in their academic career? And then making sure that we've also diversified access to all the various things that we have in our school district, including the IB diploma program. So we want to make sure that every student has the opportunity, has the support and access to reach those very important activities that we have available in our schools. Organizational effectiveness and excellence. Of course, I was not surprised to see financial stewardship here to make sure that that is one of our core tenants, that we are responsible with the large amount of funds that we are entrusted to by our taxpayers and our public, our public funds. Monitor and implementing an environmentally sustainable long-range facilities plan. This is a very, I think, this is a large desire from our community that came up and why it's very important to engage the community in the strategic. I don't think any of us really would have highlighted as strongly as it came up in our community is the desire for what our community wants to. For not just impact our students' learning, but how we operate as a system impacting the greater community indicator in the state and in, on the globe. And then another last one here is safe and inclusive environment. The fourth area cultivating and retaining quality professionals. They identified four strategic accelerators. One is consistent, using consistent equitable hiring practices, attract and tap diverse human capital, address relevant and appropriate professional currencies, prioritize and invest in anti-racist and relevant professional learning. I have kind of focused in on that one about attracting and tapping diverse human capital, especially as I've heard about our teachers of the year, who started as paraprofessionals. It is not just the traditional college student that moves through their college wanting to be a teacher. We've got to make sure that we are looking at those members of our staff that are here every day, already loving City Schools of Decatur, and how can we use them and that capital that they bring to us? So that's the one that really attracted me when I saw that. I was like, that is, and then hearing our teachers of the year talk about their experiences, that really stuck out to me. And then our last goal priority here is building a sustaining and engaging and inclusive culture, where the strategic accelerators are fostering rich connections between all stakeholders, empowering the student voice, utilize community resources and partnerships, and facilitating community, communications between all stakeholders. The one that really speaks to me here, and when our action team comes together, I'm sure they will have ideas for all the other ones, but that it's empowering that student voice. When I think about adults making decisions for students, I'm always like, well, what do the students think? Like, what would be the best classroom environment for them? What would they like to see as part of their curriculum? As part of their choice, what should their school day look like? So I'm really excited on some of our ideas on how we're going to lift the student voice through the rest of this process as well. So our strategic planning team is coming of our action team on November 10th. We started with a lot of work building this community-inspired plan for their future. And that is going to lead us into our action plan. And the action team is deliberately tapping our building and our school classroom teachers and leaders. We want them to be the integral part of building the next steps of this plan. They are the ones that are going to be the boots on the ground, doing the bulk of the work, teaching our students. So we want to hear from them on what their ideas are, what their successes are, and all of the members of Wilson Center will be there to support them on that journey, to encourage them, to make sure they've got the resources and the answers to questions that they have. So that this is a plan that is built by our teachers and our building leaders. And then as I mentioned, we want to lift the student voice. Once we've built the core parts of the action plan, we are going to be doing some opportunities for student feedback so they can inform us, are we building the, the right thing for what will work for them? And we'll be working on ways to engage not just our high school and middle school students, but we've also got some unique opportunities and thoughts on how to engage even kindergarteners and our lower elementary students. So this is going to be a plan that is built and inspired by our community, for our students. The steps and the action and the priorities will be identified by our building and our school classroom teachers. And then we will be taking this to our students to make sure that they are aware and give us input on, are we making the right move? I want to give a quick update on report cards and grading. This Thursday, November 10th, I'll grade, I'll report cards for the first grading period, the first 12 weeks, will be visible on Infinite Campus for students in grades K through eight. Nine twelve runs on a semester, so those grades aren't available until December. If they are available, December, probably close, probably January is the time they get their final grades in and posted. Just a reminder, we are not, no longer putting behavior on report cards. That's no longer one of the indicators that we are putting on our report cards, but you will see attendance. And I wanted to just make sure the board was aware how final grades are being calculated, in case you get any questions. Most of you have your own students, you may also want to know, like, hey, how'd that grade get calculated? So for K five, there are domains. So, and I've got, got a little snapshot of a report card, part of a report card that I'll show. So K five, there are domains. We don't give an overall language arts grade or an overall math grade. We grade by domain. And so what we've done under each domain is we take the highest grade per standard. So in a domain, there may be four or five standards. And let's say the one standard is assessed three times. We take the highest grade from those three times that standard has been assessed. We look at all of those highest grades, and then we take the mode for that domain. Sixth grade through eighth grade, we do basically the same thing, but we look at it as an overall grade for the subject instead of by domain. If there is no mode available, so let's say there were only, the one standard was only assessed twice, it's a four and a five, then we would average those. So that's how we, that's what we decided to do if there is no mode. So here's an example. This would be an elementary example of a math. So in the math course, there is a domain called operations. And there, I think there's, I just listed four standards for the example here, but it may be six standards, it may be seven standards, whatever. However, remember this domain. So let's say standard, the first standard was assessed three times. The highest score that the student ever earned on those three assessments was a two. And this is the one to four scale. For the second standard, it was assessed twice. The highest score was a three. The third standard was assessed four times. Its highest score was a three. The fourth standard was assessed three times. It, its highest score was a two. So we take the mode of that highest earned grade from each of the standards under the domain so that student would earn a three on their operations domain in math. And then on the bottom corner there, on the bottom right, it's a snapshot of language arts, but just so that you can see, each of the grade areas, each of the subjects will have, this is visual arts, third grade, there are four domains, and that the student got threes in all of those domains. So that first one, which is connecting, however many standards were under that, that all rolls up to a three. This is an example for middle school. So subject of inner individuals and societies, INS. Let's say in the whole course of this 12 weeks, let's say there were six standards assessed. They each are assessed either one or more times. We look at the highest grade earned, and then those are graded on a one to seven scale. So we take the mode on the one to seven scale. So we see the mode here is a five. And then you'll see, we only give the one grade per subject in our middle school classes. So you would see first term, the class name, the numbering of the class, and then the grade for that. Any questions on grading? I just have a couple of quick other updates. So I wanted to hear from the board if you've got other questions on the grading and the report cards coming out.
Sure. Mode seems unusual. Yeah, I'm curious about mode and not median in that case, because there, there are, the, the challenge with mode is that you can skew if you end up with a lot of particular grades, but you're not capturing either the up or the down. And so that's, we're not looking at median. I understand why average is sometimes not the right mechanism, but mode seems an unusual choice. I'd, I'd like to understand more about how we arrived at that, why that was selected as the right one for it. Generally, I would have assumed median would have been the way that we went on.
Yeah. Dr. Beam, do you, do you know why you guys ended up? Or is that more an asked in question?
You're not looking for the central number. You're looking for the number that most often represent. So that seems to be correct. We also had to pick a horizontal. The best choice is probably just a logic model, but you have to get it into an American system. So that was a possibility to look at.
I'd, I'd love to see some of that research and try to get, like, the actual papers. I'd like to actually understand why some of the, it is just, you know, if you're, if you're looking at it from a median standpoint, and you end up at a 5.5 or 5.6, your mode is going to drop them to a five, whereas you might consider rounding to a six. I just, I'm interested in understanding the logic behind that.
A couple of, sorry, I have a couple of questions. So when the report cards are released on Thursday, will the report cards look similar to this? So will they be able to see the, the subject?
They will just see the snapshot. They won't see the, so in the grade book now, if you would go to the grade book and look at an active, your child, like one of your daughter's grades in Infinite Campus, you would see how many times each thing, each standard had been assessed. So you would see those individual scores. What you'll see on the report card is the grade or the domain score.
So will, you won't see this nice breakdown? You'll just see the domain score without an explanation as to how they got there?
Right.
So if they want to see the, the modes, they'll have to go back and ask the teacher how they got to that? Or, but it won't be broken down into that table format, is what you're saying?
Not on the report card.
It'll just be the, it'll just be the final.
Yes, on the report card. But when they go into the grade book, they can see all of these grades.
Okay. And if parents want to piece this together, how, how will they be able to, because this is new for families? Is there going to be a little cheat sheet or an explanation or something like that so they can go back and figure out how? Because again, I agree, mode is not the most common explanation or method of getting to a grade. Most people probably use the averages. So is there going to be some kind of a cheat sheet? Other than listening to this board recording, how will families know where they can get to an explanation of this?
Yeah, let me check with the principals and see what they are putting together. A lot of them have been hosting coffee chats and putting information in their newsletters. So let me double back with the principals and see what communications they have sent out. I know Alexis, our research and analytics person, is ready on, on hand to help write some explanations and tutorials for parents just so they can understand that.
Because when I look at Infinite Campus, I see a grade. This, I got this grade on this. I don't see it broken down like, like into a nice table, like this was assessed this many times. I would, I wouldn't know how to, like, piece it together into it. Like, this meant that this was assessed this many times. My question is clear. So that here to trace the, the final grade back to how you got where you're at.
Yeah, the parent-facing grade book shows every single standard unless you filter by only greatest standard. In the table, but all the data's in there. Any other questions on the grading?
Do you think that Alexis would be open to doing maybe a short YouTube video or something that we could put on our website?
Yeah, she's put together several videos.
Oh, she has done that already?
She, yeah, someone put together videos. So we'll make sure we share that out in the Friday follow-up, the link to that as well. Yep, just so people can review that. And the, the best person to ask is a parent. Most knowledgeable about the grading, the processing. They've entered the grades. They've gone through and verified that the grades are correct before they get pushed onto the report.
And how often should our grades supposed to be entered before a final grade comes out? How often should parents be expecting grades to be updated so that they're not surprised by what the final grade?
Yeah, there should be no less than a grade every other week showing up in the grade book.
And those are just, are those just formative grades?
No, they're, they could be both.
Okay.
Yeah, just depending on how the teacher has set up the assessment practices in their classroom.
So every time the student has something assessed within a week to two weeks of that assessment, then that should be updated there with the?
Let me clarify, these are summative assessments. Because our, the way our grading works is we only use summative assessments to determine a grade. So there could be like that standard one was summatively assessed three times. They maybe had 12 formative assessments under there. And that's why it's important for the teachers to really look at the formative assessment and determine, is the student making progress on the way to that summative grade?
And I meant summative.
Yeah.
But they both are in there.
Yeah.
Right, so the formative grades would be in there.
Oh, yeah.
But it's the summative that actually determines the grade. So for the, for the lower grades, or whatever, however they're being assessed, those grades should be in there within two weeks of the assessment. So is that what I, is that what I understand?
They, so really, they should be turning around and grading stuff within like 24 hours. So if they give a, they give a formative assessment, they should be putting that grade in the grade book pretty quickly. Because that's the point of formative. If you haven't put it in and looked at it and, you know, analyzed the data as a classroom teacher, you, it's pretty much useless. So we want to see them turning, turning those formative assessments out. They're shorter assessments, they're easy to grade, can put them in quickly. The summative assessments are the really long, have to score the essay or have to, you know, analyze the math, how they went through and solved the problem.
In defense of the teachers, I'd say 24 to 48.
Forget it. Yes, you're probably right. You're probably right. Yes, yes.
They're working hard on it.
They are, they are. Yes, yes, you're right. And if I was the teacher, it would probably take me 72 hours. So just everyone know that I was really bad at getting grades in the grade book. So I understand. Okay, two updates, just dyslexia task force. We had our first meeting last Friday. It went, I think it went very well. We got some really good feedback from some of the participants, some of our parents, email of sharing that they had come in kind of not knowing what to expect and being a little bit nervous about, you know, kind of being, it would be more not as a friendly meeting, but they were very pleased that it went very well, felt that they were heard and were welcomed to the table to impart their knowledge and expertise as we move through this process. We really focused on working on our charter. And the charter is outlining our purpose, outlining the work that we're going to take, who's going to do, who's going to do what. And eventually, this task force will put together a formal presentation to share to the board on what they found and what recommendations they will be making to the school district. So we will be hearing that probably April. And then our next meeting is December 2nd. And we'll be finishing our charter and then moving into really understanding some of the foundational documents that the state has put out and the steps we have taken as a school system to implement the pilot. The next thing, just a couple of highlights from our two departments. Our information services department, they did their first district-wide phishing campaign. Phishing meaning like trying to send out teasers and emails to get people to click things. And they just did their baseline level and under, like, create some kind of prone risk factor. But it's five times lower than the industry average for education. So really proud of all the work that's been going on in our information department. Thank you. To make sure that we are, are safe from any kind of cyber attacks or things like that. And then also, we cleared the 2020, 21 school year data transmission milestone. This is a huge endeavor to move our data into a way that we can visualize it quickly and have it at our fingertips instead of, so we can take that IB diploma data and really click a couple buttons and say, here's the data that we want. We've had a really hard time finding a system and getting the data cleaned up enough to be reportable in an easy way. But I feel like we've made a lot of progress on that. And that is, we've made it through the really first big milestone there and are excited to take the next couple of steps. And then also want to give a shout out to our human resources department. They did another successful open enrollment season, and that went off really well. So congrats to them. And that's all I have for comments. Anything else from the board?
Two, two quick questions around the strategic accelerators.
Oh, yeah.
The first one was under the equity and student support. One of, yeah. Just the number, the first one right there, increased wellness resources. While I certainly agree with that, I, I would challenge maybe, let's be a little bit more specific in the language. I mean, in some ways, all of these are kind of an add resources, not necessarily physical, but attention or. I would be curious, if obviously, if we're willing to see kind of what that next level of thinking is.
And that's what will happen at the action team. So these are intentionally very broad and general so that we can drill down and create the specific performance objectives in the next section in the action team. So then the action team builds those specifics so we know what are we looking for. When we say increased wellness resources, what does that mean for City Schools of Decatur? What are performance measures we want to monitor as we see, are we reaching that success?
But, but I, I think the feedback that I am providing is that most of the others are a level of specificity that I appreciate, right? So like attractive, tap diverse human capital, very, very clear what you're needing.
Okay, yep.
Whereas increased wellness resources is sort of just put money at it. And that's nodding. That, do you see what I'm saying? There's a little directionality there.
I do, yeah, I do. So what I could do is when we meet with the action team, we have to, if we get more specific there, then the action team has to give that feedback back to the planning team. So we've got, it's a little bit of a dance, but I will reiterate that specific request when we get to starting to dig into the weeds there.
And then the second one was on the facilities plan. Number two, yes, sustainable long-range facilities plan. Presumably facilities, clarity, that includes things like school buses, that includes more than just buildings. Like, that's looking at everything. That is our supplier relationships, who we choose to source from, that kind of everything, right?
Oh, I mean, I, I, I don't know the answer to if we are looking at our suppliers. That's a good, good question I hadn't thought of.
That would be, yeah, just that to, in, in terms of thinking about how we're engaging on this front, I want to be as comprehensive as possible just because I imagine the community is thinking about it fairly comprehensively. And so just challenges to think about that.
When we were in that group on the, Dr. Parker shared the phrase long-range facilities plan has a very specific meaning in education. And it includes like SPOSS funds, transportation, literally everything. And so the real dictator feedback on what is a requirement of a school board is not the phrase long-range facilities plan, but it is monitoring and implementing an environmentally sustainable version of it, I think.
I just, yeah, my question was, facilities is broader, they just built. And I think that answered it, yeah, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions on the strategic plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. I'll move on to the chair's comment. Again, I want to thank the 60 CSC stakeholders who participated in the strategic planning team meeting on October 25th. It has been inspiring to do this work with such intelligent and reflective community members. I'm also want to give a few updates to the superintendent's search process. The board asked the Georgia School Boards Association to reopen the survey that went out to community members to allow DHS students the opportunity to provide input into this process. The survey went out to students during their advisement on October 27th, and it closed at the end of that school day. And I just want to thank the students for giving their feedback and all the feedback that we received. On November 3rd, I joined a Zoom session with CSC principals and representatives from the Georgia School Boards Association. The purpose of the session was to give CSC principals the opportunity to provide feedback on the search process. We had 100% participation from CSC principals and the board thanked each of the principals for taking the time out of their busy schedules to be involved in this process. The Georgia School Boards Association posted the City Schools of Decatur's search announcement on all of its platforms on November 4th and the application will remain open until December 18th. Board Vice Chair James Hearn and Dr. Furman and I met with Senator Elena Parent on November 4th to get her thoughts about the senior tax exemption. It was a very productive meeting and we will discuss more shortly during the discussion session of this agenda. October 17th through the 21st was National School Bus Safety Week and Bus Driver Appreciation Day was on October 17th. Accordingly, I would like to give a huge thank you and shout out to our Transportation Department. Our school bus drivers and monitors are awake before sunrise each morning, ready to spread kindness to our students with their smiling faces and encouraging words. They were diligently to put top-tier protocols and processes in place that prioritize student safety. Their dedication to ensuring our students have the best start and end of their school day is one of our greatest gifts. We are tremendously grateful for all you do to keep our students safe and to make them feel seen. On Monday, October 17th, the College Heights community gathered to celebrate Ms. Carolyn Edwards, who is now officially cancer-free. The entire school gathered in the hallway to surprise Ms. Edwards with a sash, tiara flowers, handmade cards, posters and huge hugs to show their support for her beloved teacher, colleague and friend, wishing Ms. Edwards continued good health. In October, the Beacon Hill Middle School Black Student Union students had the pleasure of meeting and speaking with Mayor Emerita Elizabeth Wilson, a true legend, icon in Decatur history. We just want to thank Ms. Mayor Emerita Wilson for taking the time to meet with our students. Thank you so much. Congratulations to our varsity volleyball team for a great season. The Bulldog season came to an end after round one of the GHSA state tournament. Our volleyball Bulldogs fought hard against a formidable opponent from Northside High School. Great job to our seniors who led this team to be the region four-5A runners-up. Thank you to our coaches whose time and positive energy allowed each player to improve throughout the year. On November 5th, our Decatur Boys and Girls Cross Country teams swept the 5A-5A GHSA state championship. The boys' team won the state title for the third time in four years and the girls' team now has their first cross-country state championship. Congratulations to all of our cross-country student athletes for this tremendous accomplishment and thank you to head coach Mary Southern and her terrific staff. Congratulations to our varsity softball team for a great season and great job to the seniors who led this team to be the region four-5A runners-up. On Tuesday, October 25th, six students from the Decatur Career Academy traveled to the Copson Civic Center to compete in the Metro Atlanta Skills Challenge hosted by the Association of General Contractors. The DCA students that competed were Lila Weisman, Jacob Enfinger, Michael Wolf, Sam Coblen, Thomas Butterfield and Ben Howard. All of our students represented as well in this first competition of its kind for the Decatur Career Academy. Lila and Jacob brought home the second-place medal for the fine furniture woodworking category, second place in the welding category. And Micah or Mika, I'm sorry if I'm apologizing her name incorrectly, took the second-place prize for blueprint reading. Thank you to the folks at Benning Construction Company for their support by providing the kids with extra tools and materials to practice with preparation for the event, in preparation for the event. Way to go, Decatur Academy students. Congratulations to the Beacon Hill Middle School students who received a stellar student athlete award from their teacher this past week. We are proud of these students' achievement in their respective sports and in the classroom at Beacon Hill. These students have been recognized for being positive role models for their peers. Each of them received a certificate noting their impact. Great job, Beacon Hill Bulldogs. The Decatur High School marching band concluded its competitive season this past Saturday at the White Columns Invitational hosted by Milton High School. The band had its best performance of the season, which was awarded with the highest rating in the music, visual, percussion, color guard and drum major captions. The band placed sixth in the 3A class, which was the most competitive class of the day. Way to go, marching Bulldogs. Congratulations to the fantastic group of ECLC teachers who spent their teacher workday gaining or renewing their CPR certification. Thank you for your dedication to safety and saving lives. Great job, College Heights. Our DHS football Bulldogs won their region game and will be playing in the first round of state playoff scheduled for later this week. Way to go, Bulldogs. And then finally, congratulations CSC teachers Liz Williams, John Summer and Javier Frazier on being selected to serve as the 2022-23 Georgia Department of Education Metro Research Social Studies Liaison representing the City Schools of Decatur. Great job, Liz, John and Javier.
That concludes my chair's comment.
We will now move to consent agenda items, which include personnel report, school nutrition and monthly financial reports, transfer of the deed for the Wilson Center to CSC and reapportionment resolution. May I have a motion to approve the consent items one through five?
Move to approve consent agenda items one to five?
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items one through five are approved. This month, the board was provided an enrollment report and monthly school data reports as informational only. We will now move on to our discussion items for this evening. Now we'll turn things over to Dr. Furman.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So our first item for discussion this evening are the board items for, the board policies for approval. And these are the board policies that were presented at the last board meeting in October. And these are mostly our personnel policies as also our policy BAB for school governance, which is the theory of action policy. That policy didn't make it into the BAB, so I've provided the board a copy of that one. And there were no changes since it was provided to the board last month. So they will just notice that that is exactly the same as the BAB policy that was presented in the board packet last month. I did want to make just a quick summary. When legal did review the G policies, G policy, GAE complaints and grievances, we didn't make some, they're small changes, but they're significant changes because of what they mean. So the one of the major changes, or it's a small change, but what we did on GAE is the policy had read that only certificated personnel could have the right to present and resolve complaints. We deleted "certificated" and made sure that that is for all employees. So it is for every employee to resolve complaints or file grievances. We wanted to make sure that all of our employees had this protection. And then the other piece that we did a small change, but creates a substantive change from the policy that was drafted is we added that the person who the grievance or the complaint is filed against does receive a copy of that complaint so that they are aware, feel like that is important for due process. It is a process that we have been following previously that we just wanted to make sure was added in this policy. Are there any questions about the substantive changes for GAE?
I had a couple of questions about that policy in particular. Is it possible to ask some questions about that or just the GAE piece?
You can ask questions about any policy.
Yeah, so I mean, in that one, I had a couple of questions about the complaints and grievances in particular. 185, section five, it says that the complaint shall be presented in writing to the Level One Administrator within 10 calendar days. I just was curious about if there is a complaint about a pattern of behavior or about a pattern of occurrences, how does that get captured in this case? Is it just a complaint for one incident, one time? Or are you, within 10 days, reporting that there is a series of things that have happened over time? I guess I'm curious, if somebody observes, if a teacher is observing something or if a staff member wants to raise a complaint about a pattern of behavior, is it, that gets raised within 10 days after the last noticed pattern of behavior? That's what I'm asking. That 10 days felt like a fairly narrow window for something that might be recurrent or intermittent. I don't know if this is a question we should refer to council on or I just?
I guess I'm just not sure, why would it matter if it's a pattern if you still, the deadline is 10 days? You've got 10 days to kind of make up your mind, is this something that I am going to file a complaint about or not? And let's say something happened November, let's say October 1st, that happened, but then again, like something happened last week and that is a pattern, I could say, hey, this happened and also it happened last month. So it is from the last instance. But you can bring in historical situations.
Yes, I guess that's my question.
If it's a pattern, yes, we would want to know that.
Okay, that was my question. Because if, you know, I might not raise it as a complaint if it's a one-time thing, somebody made a mistake. But if it's happened 30 times, like eventually I'm going to want that complaint to include all 30 times so that you see the pattern of behavior.
Yes, we would want to know that.
And so that is, it's not just the latest incident, it's all of the incidents prior to the latest incident. Because I don't actually see that language in there. I guess that was what I was reacting to. I didn't want a per, so I'm putting myself in the shoes of somebody wanting to file a complaint that reads this, being confused that they don't have the ability to bring the pattern of behavior prior to the most recent complaint.
That would, yeah, that would come out during the interview process. As we're kind of going through and talking to the employee, what's happened, has this happened in the past? We would want to know that.
Okay. And then the other question about this particular policy is around prevention of retaliation. There's one line in here, and I'm going to have to track it down. Where did it say, section five? Yeah, we basically say revisals are prohibited and if there is anything that they get raised to the PSC, right? I'm wondering if we want something more explicit, maybe not in this policy, but I would like for us to consider whether we as a board want to consider a whistleblower policy or some kind of protections for staff that raise issues that puts them at risk. I think that it's worth us considering whether we not really want to have protections in place. I know, I mean, I think we all sort of know that there's a perception that retaliation occurs and whether that is accurate or not, the perception still might inhibit somebody from bringing things forward. I would like to propose that we at least take a, we have a discussion about potentially putting some whistleblower protections or other protections in place.
So that's something that you want to discuss at the next work session or?
I think, yeah, the next work session is a reasonable place to do that. And maybe we could request getting some language or some examples of similar policies around us for us to consider as we think about it. Thank you. That was it.
Any other questions on the policies that are up for approval? Do you want to make a motion to approve the G's policies and don't forget to add BAB?
Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the G? G policies and BAB policies? Thank you, may I have a second?
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the GA and BAB policies are approved.
Great, thank you. All right, our next item for discussion are the next round policies up for approval. And these are up just for the first time for the board to review. And there is, in your primer, I did make a, you know, that breakdown of some minor changes. I did want to talk through some of the policies that we did make some significant changes to just so that we can talk through those and get any questions from the board or understanding on these policies. So these are our instructional policies. The first one that we made pretty substantive changes to, why I cannot say that word. Are related to policy IBB charter schools. So I felt like what the GSA had established in the draft policy was just very vague and just kind of, hey, here's the timeline for doing charter applications to our school system. And I felt that if CSC would be reviewing potential charter schools that would open within the city school limits, we would want to have very specific criteria for what we would find acceptable as a public charter school within our school system. So I outlined some pretty clear details on anyone who would be interested in opening a charter school, the requirements that they would have to meet to put in their petition. So just curious if there's any feedback on those or questions for me to consider as we go through the next round of reviewing these.
Is it implied that anyone that would come to us with interest in a charter system would be a resident of the city of Decatur?
It could be anybody. It doesn't have to be a resident. But that's not a requirement from the law. Yeah, the law doesn't say you have to live in the zone. It could be a public, it could be a company that wants to start a public charter school and they could say, hey, we want to do it in the city schools of Decatur limit. They would bring that petition forward.
Do we want to request that it be sponsored by or supported by someone that's an actual taxpayer or resident within our?
I could ask if that's something we can put in there, if that's what the board wants me to look into.
I just, I mean, what I don't want to have is somebody from another district coming here and trying to disrupt what we're doing with. So we sort of know some of the issues where these go sideways.
Yeah.
I would think that we would want, I'm very open to good ideas that come forward and interesting ideas that will come forward, but I would want to know that there was some community support for it. Is what I'm thinking.
Okay. So asking if we can further limit who would potentially put in a petition for a charter or at least if there was someone that they had a kind of some support. And that's in there at some point that they have to have.
A local?
Yeah, they've got to, where is it? They've got to have like signatures on a petition showing support or something.
Okay.
Strong community, evidence of strong community support, parental outreach, local community outreach. It's number eight that a petition must contain.
Okay, that might actually.
That covers?
My, yeah.
The original one includes a number of things that are prohibited from submitting charter petitions. It seems like that language didn't make it over to our substantial edit. Or I missed it reading through it very quickly previously in full disclosure.
I'll read back through, yeah, I'll read back through that because I thought I worded some of it differently. But I'll review this with council and see if there's anything pertinent in there that we need to make sure we include.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's home study programs, schools, sectarian schools, religious, private for profits.
Mm-hmm.
Existing.
That's in there.
Or it is in the green one?
Uh-huh. It's, looks like it's section one, go down bullet points, all student bullet points. Right above number.
We'll take another look at it too.
If you can, if you can limit who can do it, you could certainly.
Does this, does this language say that if somebody came with a charter, A, that they would have to go through the same charter process that we go through or?
It's different, so this is outside of a school system.
And then B, that they would have to have some, a school, they would have to provide some service or some unique service that we don't provide. So it couldn't be a Decatur High School nor a Center Decatur High School south.
That's exactly why I put that in there. It's got to be some innovative model that we don't offer, yep. So it's not just, hey, we want to start our own Decatur High School and we're going to do exactly what Decatur does, but in our own little zone.
Yeah, I think just making sure that that language is clear. Just saying it's a new and innovative model, it might, I mean, I don't know if that, I read that, it's a new and innovative model, but I don't know if it struck me as.
So just, so making sure that it is very clear that it is new and innovative, different from what we do.
Exactly.
Got it.
Already offered.
Okay.
Yeah, already offered.
Got it, yep.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Wait, all right. Anything else on IBB? Okay, the next one that I made, I just deleted, it is policy IDBA. There was initially on the very top, a definition of sexual education slash AIDS education. Just felt like the wording in that was not in tune or aligned with what our beliefs are as a system. So took that out. Welcome. Scheduling for instruction is the next one that is, we made, we made some significant changes to. This one is interesting because as I was reviewing what other schools? This one is, is interesting because as I was reviewing what other school systems have done for policy I E D, um, they are kind of all over the place. Um, on bears it some, some school districts, which is interesting. They don't have it in I E D. They have included the language for I E D in another policy. Um, so for ours, if we keep it as just a separate policy, the intent of this policy, from what I can understand and, and see with this, and again, this will be making, when we review this with legal to make sure that we're lined up, is if you're a school, we say as a school system, we have a hundred and eighty days of school. Uh, but we know within a school system, the principal may say, hey, we're going to do X, we're going to do Y. Or our baseball team made it to the national finals and they have to leave school. Um, even though it's a school-sponsored event, it's not academic. So it embeds within this policy that we will have some of those. We understand that some of that, some of those things may happen and we're okay with it, but we know it, we, we say we will limit it at X number and we've limited it at ten. So that's basically what this is saying. The other part of this is that there are some waivers for the, um, the law outlines. I deleted the waivers from what our policy and just, um, added a comment that we would follow the waivers that are outlined in the law. But if the board wants us to specifically include the waivers in there, um, we could leave that in there. Questions about that one or clarifications?
I, I tend to think that, uh, someone that would go to our policies for clarity on what's allowed, rather than us forcing them to go find another look up in another law, they, we may want to go ahead and explicitly lay out the waivers. I, I mean, just, um, making it easier for somebody to digest it would be of benefit.
Other board members have an opinion on that?
So I just need clarification. Are these the different types of waivers? Are we saying?
The waivers are the hardship waivers down, which number? Uh, number three hardship waivers that go up here.
Okay.
So for, let's say, it would be an individual situation where there might be, um, and I think kind of down on the bottom, like if a student has economic reasons or a family emergency where they've got to be outside of the school, that wouldn't normally count for an absence. We would say that can count as one of these.
Got it.
Present but not there, present but not.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so, and so Hans, you, you would like to keep these in here?
I, I would, because I do, I mean, a parent's going to look to this and say, what is allowed? And then we're going to make them go look up on another website to try to figure it out. And then visit a kind of white roadside, what, like, like just put all the information together, I feel like.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We need that part in. Okay, we need that part in. And then the last one that I just added, what I thought was kind of in line with our core beliefs as a board is under field trips and excursion, and that is I F C B. Added language in there about not ever barring students because of lack of funds, um, making sure that we are supporting our students in that way, um, and that we could require those fees. However, we would make reasonable efforts to assist any student. Okay? That is all for the policies that are up for review. We'll review these with legal over the next month and then we will, um, bring them back for final approval. If there are any substantive changes made between now and then, I will report those to the board.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, um, we have future dates listed on the agenda for up. Right.
I don't know what that was.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Let now, let now fill up too early.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, um, when Hans and I were reviewing the packet, he, um, picked out some typos and errors. I went ahead and we reviewed this, copy edited this again to make sure that we've corrected those and I'll share this updated version with the board. Um, were there any other substantive changes, Hans, that you wanted to, um, discuss with the board?
The, I think the main section that I wanted to discuss was the superintendent evaluation section. That was the one that we, we didn't as a group get to fully discuss and Natasha and Carmen had worked on some of those. Um, we, we can discuss all of the, of them. The one that stuck out to me was the, the second bullet that says goals are within the superintendent's skill set and level of training. Um, and I, I, my reaction to that is more that goals should be, like the system needs focused, should be kids focused, kids first. And if it's not within the superintendent's skill set, then we should be providing training or we should providing the opportunity for it to become in the superintendent's skill set. But what I don't want to do is say, well, we're not going to hold the superintendent accountable for something that the kids clearly need. Um, that, that felt backwards. I, I would, I would want to revisit the language around that. And, and I, I understand the point of it, like we can't just make up a set of goals or objectives that are unachievable. But I, I would like to see that a little bit more starting from the standpoint of, you know, student and system focused and then what is necessary to ensure that we give the superintendent the opportunity to build the skills if it's not within their current skill set.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, we've done that in the past where if there was something we felt that the superintendent needed, then as a board, we, we provided that. So, um, they don't see any issue with changing the wording there. Maybe we need to, I think, I think what, what I, Tasha and I were thinking when we wrote that was that there may be points in time where something is asked and, or we don't want to put tasks on the plate of the superintendent that go into the evaluation that are simply outside of the scope of your training. So we don't, we shouldn't say the superintendent is evaluated on, you know, communication, uh, skills, for example, and that includes computer skills or computer literacy skills and that maybe is not what you're trained to do, nor is it in your job scope. But perhaps to, and I see your point, if, if part of what superintendent should be doing and it's maybe not within the skill set that you brought to the table, then we should train you up to it. So maybe the second, maybe to wordsmith that a little bit, it should say, you know, it should be, we should, your goals should be within the scope of your training, but if your job requires it, we should provide proper training to get you there. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't think we should put goals on, you know, when it's on a super, you know, goals in a superintendent's evaluation that are, that are outside of their wheelhouse, you know?
But I, I, one thing I would just clarify, like, there's a lot of goals that are outside of my wheelhouse, but I've got Sergio, who is the expert in that area. I've got Lindy, who's an expert in finance. Even though I don't have all of those skill sets, I've got someone on my team that is able to do that. And I think that, to me, as a superintendent, you, I kind of see what Hans is saying, like the goal. Then is in charge of, if they're not the expert, getting someone at the table that is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, if we are trying to close the achievement gap by so many points in reading, obviously, you know, not obviously, but.
I'm not a reading expert.
Right.
Yeah.
But we have, you know, we have those kind of goals, but, you know, really you're, uh, the folks in, in your administration who help reach those goals and so.
Um, I mean, maybe people have the goal, um, evaluation linked to the strategic plan.
That, I think that's.
Pretty, yeah.
Because they, they should be. I mean, I, the, ultimately, the strategic player should guide everything, um, including the superintendent's evaluation tool. I think that. What are your thoughts, Carmen, I see here?
Well, they don't always.
Yeah, I want to be careful about putting it out there that the strategic plan and the superintendent's evaluation are the same thing because they aren't.
No, it's not the same thing, but I, but I, but I think that there should, there should be some direct links between the strategic plan and the superintendent's evaluation tool.
Well, uh, let me, let me give an e- example, because I actually kind of understand why Carmen's a little concerned here, right? So we have, wait, I don't want to also go, are we allowed to talk about things that are in the current plan? I don't want to cross into evaluations or anything like that.
When we say in, in what, in her.
Current evaluation, I just would, like, as an example.
I don't know, the evaluation tool is open, the ratings are not.
Okay, okay. So one of the things that we do talk about in the evaluation tool is, is fairly tactical level things around communications and things that we want to see done around communication consistently that, that really wouldn't make sense in a strategic plan. But they do absolutely belong in the evaluation. And so if we only say the goals are linked to the strategic plan, then I think we leave, we take flexibility away from ourselves to focus on discrete areas where we might want to see either improvement or continued work on, in the system. Does that make sense?
But I think even with communication, there will be ways to tie it to some of those, uh, goal areas that were set in the strategic, um, planning team meeting. I, I just, you know, I, it's my understanding from conversations with GSBA is that, oh, because, uh, ultimately, we may need to revisit the, um, superintendent's evaluation tool once we get the strategic plan in place. Um, and so, you know, because it's a way to, to make sure that the things that we are holding the superintendent responsible for, that, you know, um, that they're attached to the strategic plan. I mean.
But, but they're going to be tactical things that we want to see the superintendent do that will support execution of the strategic plan, but that won't necessarily be in the strategic plan itself.
No, it should support the strategic plan, I agree.
Right, like, 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 like.
But it, but it, but it shouldn't be anything in her, in the superintendent's evaluation that you can't attach to the, to the strategic plan.
Well, if, if we're saying that we can be as, I don't know what you, nebulous sounds like a bad word, that's not what I mean. And we, we can be as flexible as to say anything in the plan, as long as we can say it supports the strategic plan, I'm okay with it, right? But if it says that it's in the strategic plan, I'm not okay with it.
Now, I would support.
The support is the better, is the better language, yeah.
Maybe we can wordsmith this by saying the goals are within the superintendent's skill set, comma, the level of training of her team or however you, whatever, or.
Cabinet.
Cabinet and support the strategic plan. Maybe that will encompass all of those goals that be satisfactory. Goals are within the superintendent's skill set, comma, the level of training of her cabinet and support or align with the strategic plan of the district.
So.
Would that encompass everything without, without making it seem like, which was Dr. Furman's point, that everything in her evaluation has to be something that is a tool in her, her toolbox or she has to acquire said tool. Some of it may be Sergio's or maybe Dr. B or what have you.
But we might be, if we might identify things that we want to see worked on that aren't actually within her current cabinet, that we would want added to her current cab- like, there, there might be things that need to be done to serve the kids that need to be added to the current cabinet. So I wouldn't want to limit it to just where it currently is. Like, one of the pieces of feedback might be, we need this skill, let's go get that skill.
Well, that's where you have the word goals. So you have it in there as part of the goals of her evaluation. So you have it as a goal, so she can meet that goal and if she's not there, then.
If, if we, if we, if we kept it simple as to, you know, support the strategic plan, what, what, what is the risk, you think, there in limiting it to that?
I think, I mean, there's not a risk necessarily. I think, like I said, there's, I think that these are two different things. The evaluation tool, um, the board norms and the strategic plan are two different things in my mind. They're two different vehicles and documents. Um, and I think that we have to be clear about making su- about, we have to be clear about understanding that the strategic plan is not the superintendent's evaluation tool. While they support one another, they don't, they don't overlap completely, you know what I mean? That's, that's true. And, and also when we're thinking the strategic plan over a five-year period versus the superintendent's goals over a one-year period, we also wouldn't want the community to come back and say, well, superintendent didn't perform this particular strategic plan item, it shows you haven't finished it yet, but did meet the, the, the one-year goal. So I don't, I mean, I want to, I, I agree with Jana, it does have a connection to the strategic plan. I definitely want to make it, make the language so it doesn't, so someone can't come back and say, well, this evaluation doesn't match the strategic plan. We're not saying it should match, so how do we?
My concern is not to have goals in the superintendent's evaluation that, you know, we might just think is a great idea if it has no relevance to our strategic plan.
But there might be, I feel like there might be some things in the superintendent's evaluation tool that may not be, maybe their personal goals or maybe their organizational goals that don't have anything to do with the strategic plan. That wouldn't be a bad thing.
I just don't know if that's how it's supposed to go.
Well, and I, I actually agree with, with Carmen on that, that, that limiting our flexibility makes it a, me a little bit. I, I actually understand both your point there, that, that what we don't want to do, and I think this is the reason why the language is, was proposed in the first place. What we don't want to do is create a set of goals for the superintel- and, and tenant that are irrelevant to the running of the system. Like, that's what we're saying when it supports the strategic plan. We don't want to, we don't want to set a bunch of goals for her that are irrelevant. Totally agree with that. But I think if we say it must in some way support the strategic plan, I'd be nervous that we might bump up into areas where we want something done that is very tactical, that might not be easily linked to the strategic plan.
Would you all be comfortable if we got clarification, um, from GSBA?
Sure. Well, I mean, was this based on language that we saw in another plan somewhere or?
If, um, if memory serves me correctly, we had trouble finding this particular subheading in an, at, with another model. So we, so we kind of base, so we created this based on, we minced it together from some other places. Now, it's like I say, if this particular bullet point is a pain point, I mean, we can, I think we can wordsmith it uh, to, to make it to our.
But it feels, it feels, I mean, it feels rather significant, though.
It does.
There's one bullet about the evaluation and the strategic plan. And I'd just like to get there, you know, to ask the SBA since they are helping us with all of this, board norm, strategic plan.
Well, I, I mean, I think.
Can we pull it up? What, um, can I have Santos, King? Let's kind of work for those and not.
I think Tasha is likely the only one that has it because they were emailed to her.
Yeah.
If we.
Mm-hmm.
I had to, I had to try.
If, I mean, the strategic, the point of the strategic plan is to serve the students of the community, right? I mean, like, what if we pick it to that level? Goals have to be able to support somehow.
I, I wrote down the superintendent's goals should be driven by the goal of the strategic plan. So even if you came up with something like superintendent needs to learn more about something, needs to learn Mandarin.
Right, sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
That's my concern.
That's my concern. If, if, if that somehow is important in the goal to set, to meet the outcome of meeting the strategic plan, I would support including that. Um.
I think the other thing too is this, and this is an important point for the community, which we put up there, is that a lot of the strategic plan goals are broad with subcategories, right? A lot of them are long-term, so, and we evaluate the superintendent multiple times over the short term. So I think that's maybe some of my hesitation of just saying superintendent's evaluation is based on the. so I think that's maybe some of my hesitation of just saying superintendent's evaluation is based on the.
You know, we need to drive this level of efficiency in operations, but then, you know, tell Sergio to let go of all of the staff and to shut down, you know, and you can't do that. You have to provide the resources necessary to be successful.
So, okay, first, are we putting a pin in this second bullet? Or are we saying, are we, are we, are we scratching this one and adding your suggestion about the resources?
I would move that we put a pin in this one and allow us to have the time to think through it properly, and then revisit adding the language that we agreed to. And that whether or not we have solved that by the next board meeting, we approve the rest of the norms that I think we all, all agree to at this point in time.
I would second that.
And it looks like, um, just for context, that the examples that we were working off of from multiple districts, none of them had the superintendent evaluation. So that's why.
I think there was one that did, and that's why it prompted us to put that in there.
No, I think we already had it in there. That was about in the original norm, and then, because I remember going back to Dr. King and saying, this, this is my section, but there's, there are no examples, there's no language, there, there isn't anyone. So to Jana's point. Kind of. Have the superintendent evaluation section that can help. Mm-hmm. Acceptable. Does that sound good, everybody?
Okay. All right, so then, are we voting on these now, or the next?
We can, there was one other, um, on communication with stakeholders slash community. We, there was a pla- a placeholder in there that was a note to go back and reference the document. So it's on the fourth bullet under communication with stakeholders, is this copy better language from reference documents? And I think what we meant to put in there, when I re- went back through and looked at all the examples we had, was that bullet should read, direct all stakeholders' questions, input, or discussion to the superintendent, who will communicate them as needed to the board. That's what we meant that to say. If that's okay, then I'll put that in the norms, and then I, I think we've caught all the other typos.
Did you read that to me again?
Direct all stakeholders' questions, input, or discussion to the superintendent, who will communicate them as needed to the board. I think that's, I think that's what it was supposed to say, and I know you and Hans and James, you guys worked on that one, so not sure if I captured the right intent there of what you were thinking, because I was looking through and was like, where did we?
I, there, but that, I think we were specific on types of communicate, like, if a stakeholder reaches out and asks some, there, there is going to be communication where I don't necessarily know it has to be core, that's asking a lot of your time, if we're sending every single email any of us get from a stakeholder to you. So I, I do feel like, James, we were intending some throttling of that amount, like, there were some parameters that we were putting around it, not everything. That, it just feels like that's giving you a lot of busy work, uh, Dr. Furman.
So are you, are you saying that we would try to answer those questions before we send them to?
Que- questions are a good example of something that comes through, the comments or informa- like, you, whatever you just said that Dr. Furman was pretty comprehensive, it was more than just questions, like information or other things.
Discussion, yeah. But isn't that the job of the superintendent, to be the secretary of the board?
It, it, I mean, do you mind all of the questions, everything being?
I get them anyway.
Well, so ag- again, if, if a community member is seeking information from the system, I think that is absolutely appropriate, but if a community member sends me an email and says, oh, hey FYI.
You should forward it, I think, I think you should forward it and copy all of it.
And say, hey FYI.
That way, that just keeps us all on the same, you know, you know, we all have the same information. What we do with it is going to be different, but.
Uh, so just to be clear, what we're suggesting is that any text, any email, anything we get from any member of anyone in the community that comes to us, we send to Dr. Furman, who then distributes that to all the rest of us. That just feels super, super invasively comprehensive.
Hmm. I think that, I thought that was the understanding that we had, that we would share that and copy, we would cop, we would, you know, send it to Dr. Furman, and we would copy the board then.
But I've done, if I, if I felt like I received an email that, that the rest of you had not, but maybe I don't, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I get plenty of texts, it doesn't occur to me that that's something that, that gets shared with.
Because you are, because you are able to answer the question?
No, questions go to Dr. Furman, I'm not disputing that at all, right? That's, that, but what, what we're saying is it's way more than that, it's any communication that comes to us, any text.
Like, what would be an example?
I don't know, I'd have to go dig it up, you know, and somebody go, hey, what time is the, what, well, no, it's a question, I'm sorry. I'll go look, but I, it just, it does, it does feel like that's.
Because I feel like when they, when we receive those texts, it's something that they want addressed. If, if there's concern about an incident at football game, or, you know, or a threat, or, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's never, always something seems important and relevant, but.
We're talking about emails, not texts.
No, that's, see, that's what I'm saying, because we're saying communication, that's what I'm saying.
Because I don't get texts, I get emails.
And this brings up what we were talking about at the work session the other day, because some, that, another reason why we would make it available to the rest of the board and to Dr. Furman is because access, and so someone in the community may have my phone number, and so they choose to text me, just hoping that it'll get to us quicker, or whatever, or they, they don't have my email address readily available, so they just text me. I'm going to forward that to the entire board, so that, that community member, member isn't just talking to me.
I did, I agree with all of that, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I think that there is communication that is relevant for the entire board related to this, that I don't have any issue with. I guess, I'm just, I'm, well, what I don't want to end up doing is having a bunch of non-relevant communication.
Thanks for the sake of consistency and transparency and clarity for, for the recording here and for committee members, because I think people think that we don't reply, or we're just reading emails, or we're not listening. Then the board norms say here that for day-to-day operations, questions about IV testing fees, we read these things, questions about, um, you know, incidents with, at football games, we read these things, if it's a question directed to the board, then the board chair replies. If it's a question about a person's. If it's directed to us individually, we have to forward it to everybody, and then that person in kind replies, because I think there's a perception that we don't read, or we don't listen, or we don't care, and that's not it in the slightest thing, but there is a policy or a chain of command. Who ultimately replies? So if you email individually, you have to let everybody know that you guys sent emails, because I don't know if it's clear to folks.
Oh, it's definitely not clear.
So when this gets re-listened to, we have read the email, but there is a way that ha- it has, that, that it has to be, and I think it's important for us to follow that, so that there's not, that there's clear expectations from folks. So I think we want to reply because we care, you know, but we have to be consistent and follow it here. So if we get an email and it's to us, we reply. If it's about day-to-day operations, then she replies, if it's the press, then she replies. That's what I read here.
Can you read your?
Direct all stakeholders' questions, input, or discussion to the superintendent, who will communicate them as needed to the board.
For me, to say about school or school board related issues, that will be out. Like, there's, there's like.
Well, who would, who would say what, yeah, when would somebody text or email you? And it would be about school. I mean, if that's a different.
Thanks for ra- thanks for raising this question last night, or blah, 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 like, there's a ton of crap like that that happens, that, that, like, I just, I feel like a flood of stuff, I, you know, excuse my French, but it feels like there's a flood of stuff like that. Uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't.
Okay, so that's, so that's specific then.
Yeah.
So you're saying like a thank you, do we need to forward a thank you?
I am merely saying that.
No, but that's a good example, right?
That's a great example. I think that, that, that there is some discretion where somebody is clearly looking for informa- like, I don't have any issue with the intent of the policy as we're describing.
Yes.
I'm, I am thinking in the raw tactical execution of it, like, I don't want it to send terabytes of information. I'm not that popular, I'm not trying to say that, but, but there is obviously, there's irrelevant stuff that we don't need to be sending through, but I would say.
Well, I guess the other, the other thing is. If a community, it's, you know, it's kind of puts us in a position, though, that it, it's important enough for the community member to send to you, then maybe we shouldn't, since you, then we're going to have to decide for what's relevant and what's irrelevant.
Right, no, I know, that kind of opens up a judgment on this, yeah.
Right, so it just, it just.
But they come to you, to you as a board member, not just Hans, then it's for all of us.
It, I think it's, yeah, there's less potential.
Air on that side, yeah.
So, so if, yeah, let me, let me see, if I am comfortable, if we're saying communication where it is, like, specifically related to our roles as board members, is shared with the board, like, that I mind. But okay, okay, I'm comfortable with that. Surely, I'm not the only one where there could be some fuzziness there, but like, yes.
I think you're the only fuzzy one.
Fair enough. I love these public conversations. Um, okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
All right. So if that is okay, then I think you, if you want to approve, the board is comfortable approving the norms, then we'll trace good in that one, and then we're.
All right, minus the other one.
Minus the second bullet under the superintendent evaluation.
It's the board.
Except for that bullet.
Go ahead and be the motion.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the CSE board norms with the exception of bullet point two under superintendent evaluation.
I second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the board norms are approved with the exception of, of bullet number two under superintendent evaluation.
And the final topic for this evening is the senior tax exemption. I'm sorry. So, um, the board had reviewed the exemption at the work session, and we came up with a eighty percent, a number around the eighty percent AMI. Um, we met with Ms. Parent, she, um, her take on it is we should, as a board, move forward with looking at the exemption around that number, but at a five-year instead of a three-year. So the, the discussion for tonight is, do we want to look at a five-year exemption? Um, her take on that was, um, it's probably a pretty good time to get the senior tax exemption through pretty easily, and, um, to give us five years of data going forward. We did, you know, adjust the AMI to look at kind of the current financial situation, um, so. Jane, that probably has more answers and details than I'm remembering this time, so feel free to.
Yeah, as Senator Parent shared, that's one of the reasons we got many of the political reasons why we were given a two-year extension, when the school board expressly asked for five, or no longer, um, around, or are part of the political climate, nor should they be relevant. Um, she agreed with my point that it is, we're in a tough spot here, because we have two years of data, and those two years of data are, in fact, COVID data. Um, but if we go ahead and raise the AMI level, uh, which we are all on board of, to increase that, um, and give it five years, we will definitely come back with a more robust set of data. We are likely to include a lot of the seniors, and, um, that she didn't think that there would be much pu- much pushback from the CAV delegation for five, and so, um, that kind of spoke to me, so.
And, you know, she, she didn't give us, and we asked, you know, were there any, uh, potential, you know, not risk, but, uh, pitfall, and, um, you know, she, she didn't give us any indication that there were, but if we asked for five, and if there was, that, you know, could potentially give some room for negotiation if they wanted to go down, or if, if we asked for three, you know, there's.
If there's two, again.
Where we, where we, uh.
Isn't it five initially, five is initially?
We initially asked for five based off the Georgia State study, because I said five years is a good run. It just, if we pass it now, in theory, we'll come back with seven.
Oh, I guess that's your thing, okay.
The only, the only caveat to that long of a window is that it means we're constantly catching up, we're several years out of date on the AMI, and it means that each year, a larger and larger segment of seniors fall off qualifying for that exemption until we revisit it and rewrite it. So we potentially, in this case, would have seven years at sixty thousand, which is going to constrain the number of seniors that get it seven years from now, because we know incomes are going to grow and inflation is going to grow. So that was my only concern, I, I suspect it's probably too much to hope for here, that we would be allowed to change the AMI without requiring another vote. Uh, my guess is that we do, if, there's no way to change that without requiring another election. So, um, okay, then, then I would say we, on the front end, push the AMI as high as we possibly can comfortably push it in anticipation of it growing, within reason, right? So if we round it, we don't round it down, we round it up, that sort of a thing, right?
I agree with that, and, and we have a meeting with Georgia State coming up, where I think that that should be the, the most important question, which is, um, how high can we go and stay within what's sustainable for the school business?
Reasonable.
And, and I should. Every person who is on this board, or has ran for this board, et cetera, are very much in support of stretching this as far as we can to. Need to continue to repeat that out loud.
The, the second thing I would do is to be. The, the second thing I would do is, to the extent we can, can we strongly encourage or lobby our fellow city government for when they adopt theirs, that they adopt the same A M I that we adopt, so that we're not doing different, multiple different calcula. I mean, I get that that's totally within their space of request. But if we pick sixty-five or we pick seventy, whatever that number may be, that we request that they pick the same, so that it's just simple, you know, and people aren't having to track multiple income levels on their own. I qualify for one, but I don't qualify for the other, like, I'm.
No, but the communication that we received today saying that the A M I would be static, wasn't that in?
That, yeah, instead of it being the eighty percent that could go, instead of saying eighty percent, and then they have to recalculate that every year on what that would be, would say we'll pick the number that kind of looks at sixty thousand, if that's around the eighty percent.
Yeah, we've had, I think it was one of the first meetings of the senior tax exemption group, was like, why don't we just write it as eighty percent of what the region's A M I is? And no one has been able to find any legislation or law anywhere in this state that is written, but I think is intuitive. So, all of us, which is like, add up what the A M I is. As it goes up, you're safe, so you don't have to revisit them. And, and I, and members of the city government have talked about, like, many of their exemptions are written in what looks like nineteen seventies prices as well, and need to be revisited.
Yeah, their, their senior, their exemption on this was a twenty thousand dollar income limit, which is, you know, that's. But, okay, yeah, so with those two caveats, I'm okay asking for five years. If we push the A M I as high as we possibly can comfortably push it, which may be more than the eighty percent, right? In that, we also request that the city. Limited leverage, but I think it's a reasonable ask, that we don't have a bunch of different income levels that seniors have to track.
I'll reach out to Andrea and talk through that piece. And then we'll talk with G S U, I think it's tomorrow afternoon, our meeting with them.
How soon will they be able to give you that first chair information?
Pretty quick, based on the models are there. So they, I think they would likely just have to update it with the last two years of data and make sure that they weren't way off based on what they did. And as long as that's true, they could probably sell us. If you go to it and click on the tablo school, it's very cool. You can play with like, oh, I want to adjust that, and the number of seniors jumps. So I imagine by next, tomorrow afternoon, they'll have two new years of data that all it does is confirm that what they told us two years ago was correct.
So, we'll get those questions. I'll communicate that out to the board. I'm going to add the senior tax exemption back then to the, the number work session so that hopefully we have a resolution ready to move forward. And then the other piece of this is Senator Parent recommended we go ahead and start talking with the rest of the delegates and kind of get them, make sure they're also aware of what we're asking for and start soliciting their support. So, we'll be working on setting up those meetings with the board and delegation members.
She, she did suggest that we go ahead with lobbyists, right?
She didn't think, she didn't think it was a bad idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
He said, you know, as, as they do, I mean, they get busy and, you know, we want to make sure we got the information when we need it.
Okay. So we, just a follow, we are doing that now, or going to find?
Yeah, we've got, I think James had a recommendation. He forwarded us an email to Jana and I an email today.
Okay.
Next step would be to set up a meeting without lobbyists.
Yeah, I had reached out to the city's new lobbyist and just asked for input about whether we should have the same one or something. And he had a very strong recommendation of someone, and I forwarded it to Jane and Maggie. I can set up the whole board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Furman. We have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trainings, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about the future dates for the work of the board? Hearing that. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-six P M.